...of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice thrall.
Could everybody mute their phone?
Brenda?
Yes.
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Can anybody else hear?
I can just hear you, Tom.
How about now?
And I'm just going to say for the record, I have a hard out at 6:00 because of work. I'm in New York right now, and I have a work event.
Can anyone hear? Can anyone hear me?
Need that much time, but just.
Oh, we're muted. We're muted right there. Can you unmute us?
I guess it depends on your definition.
Who's? Oh, that's Dave Kelly. Who's doing that? How about now? Can you hear me now?
Just now, yep.
Okay. Who was doing that? Oh, you were. I was like, okay. Who is that? Okay, sorry, we were muted. Calling the meeting to order. We just did the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm just going to ask, before we get into the -- well, let's do the minutes, and then we'll go into it, okay? Can I get a motion to approve to consider and act upon the minutes of July 12th, August 1st, August 11th, August 24th, and August 31st, and November 14th, all of 2022?
September 14th.
Excuse me, yes, September 14th.
Yep. I'll make a motion as you just read.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
Just thanks, Drew, for a lot of -- that was a lot of writing.
Sure was.
But I think we captured it, so thank you.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Before we go in, I want to ask if we can -- can I get a motion to move item 20 up to after the appointment, so after item 6? Item 6, two items.
Uh, so moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The reason I'm doing that is because that item, that discussion item, Caitlin can be here for that, and she wouldn't be available later on, so I just wanted to be able to do that. All right, our next item is item number 4. I would just want to recognize, just for information purposes only, the resignation of William Diaz from District 5 on the RTM. And I'm going to open it up to item number 5. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment of William Diaz to the Ethics Commission?
Uh, so moved.
Seconded.
I will open up the item for discussion. I believe Mr. Diaz was supposed to be on the phone or on WebEx. I don't see him.
I am.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Oh, okay, very good.
Yeah, I'm traveling home from Hartford. I apologize.
No, that's fine. I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Well, I don't have any questions except because I know Mr. Diaz, both in his role as an RTM member, and it is their loss, but I hope the Ethics Commission's gain. I'm so happy that Mr. Diaz will continue his service to the town. So I don't have questions, but just a comment to say thank you so much. I think it's great that we will still be able to benefit from the wisdom of your lived experience and your thoughts and your input, and I'm just glad that you'll still be able to serve in this way, presumably, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to thank you for your commitment to continue to serve the town. I wish you the best of luck in the new role. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, well, I think they're going to miss you on the RTM, Mr. Diaz, but hopefully you'll bring some knowledge and help to the Ethics Commission. I know they don't meet very often, not as much as the RTM, that's for sure. But I hope you enjoy your service on the Ethics Commission. So we have a motion and a second. Will, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm just grateful that you'll have me on the Ethics Commission. It's an appointment I really align with, and I just want to thank you all for having me. Thank you.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The next item is -- excuse me.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
Is item B, Fair TV. This also requires approval from the RTM. Do I have a motion? Excuse me, to approve William Ferguson on Reynolds Drive for Fair TV to replace Alexander Vishno.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
And is William on the line?
I'm here.
Oh, William, there you are. Hi, how are you?
Good, hurry.
I'm hurrying, I have a frog in my throat. Is anything you would like to say?
No, just I'd be honored to be a part of it. You know, I think my experience in, you know, moderate public service from living in the city and also in media more generally serves as a good intersection.
Oh, that really helps, yes. I did read your resume, and I think you're going to be a good fit.
I hope I can bring something up.
Well, we'd love to have you. Alex Vishno has some big shoes to fill. He did a lot of work on the commission, sort of unsuspectingly. He was in my gym. He worked out of my gym, and I said to him, "Do you think maybe you could be on the Fair TV Commission?" And he served, so that was a really big help. So we really appreciate you stepping up. Is there any questions from the board?
No, I'd just like to wish you the best of luck. I think that this commission, as COVID has proven and everything, is very important for the town. I think Fair TV has been a great asset to the town in many ways, so I wish you the best of luck.
And I also want to wish you well. I had a chance to speak to Mr. Ferguson earlier, and as well as the other candidate for Fair TV Commission, and just was pleased to hear about your approach, and obviously your media background being helpful, but we just talked about access and the importance of consensus, and just thank you for your time, and good luck.
Very good. And we also have Anne Marie Laganes.
Do we -- we have an open motion on the table for Mr. Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, okay, because the way she has this written, Jennifer, they're together, so, all right, we'll approve that one, and then we'll open up to the next one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nancy?
Oh, yeah, I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for stepping up to serve. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And I tell everybody the same thing, and I'll say this, you're free to stay, or you're free to leave. It's up to you. We do have a long agenda. Our next is Anne Marie Laganes. Can I get a motion to approve for Fair TV Commission, and this will replace Patrick Colligan?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
And is there any questions or comments from the board?
I just echo that I did have a chance to speak to Anne Marie Laganes, sorry if I'm butchering that, and also just wanted to say thanks. She was able to answer the questions that I had, and we talked again about consensus and approach, and also with her background in journalism, I think it's helpful for context, so I just want to wish her well, and thanks for the time, and thanks for making time to answer my call.
And once again, just thanks for your service, and echo that it's a very important board.
Do you have anything you'd like to share or say?
No, I'm taking it.
Okay, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it. Okay, next item, item number 6. This is just for information purposes. We have a resignation -- well, withdrew. Mr. Downey withdrew his candidacy from the Conservation Commission, which was on the last Board of Agenda, so he has not been sworn in yet. Therefore, the position does now remain open, so I just wanted to let that -- share that information. And our next one is motion to approve -- no, actually, this is a for select woman appointment only, no vote. So just for information purposes, Fairfield Housing Authority, Claudine Civitello is going to step in from the term that -- replacing James Kelly, whose term expired. This term goes to 11/26. And so I don't know if Claudine is on the line. Claudine, hi, how are you? Sorry. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you, and I look forward to you serving on this. Obviously, this is a very important commission that I think has been in sort of the hot seat the last several years, and
May I ask you please?
No, 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 you're going to do great. I think we're doing some good things on this in the town now with trying to build some affordable housing and try to get ahead of ourselves, and I think the trust fund that the town established several years back has really been very helpful to us meeting that goal, so we look forward to having you serve. Thanks so much.
Thank you for the honor.
Well, thank you for honoring us with your time and talent. Does anyone on the board have anything they want to say, even though it's not a vote? Is there any comments?
Best of luck in the new position, and thank you for stepping up to serve.
Yes, well, he said. Thank you.
Cynthia, thank you very much for that work.
Well, my door and phone line are always open if you ever have any questions.
And Christopher as well.
And Mark Barnard is a very good resource. You'll really enjoy working with him.
I've worked with Carol.
Yeah, and Carol's great, too. Yes. Well, congratulations. All right, we're going to skip to item number 20. So I'm going to ask for a motion to hear and consider and act upon a resolution approving the transfer of the fiscal year 2021. Good evening, thank you for coming. To 2022, revenue surpluses and
Can I make a motion to waive the reading of all of this, and it will be explained?
Okay. There's a motion. Tom? Is Tom on?
He was. I just saw him on there.
He's over on the right now.
Dude, I made a motion to waive the reading. You don't want to second it?
I'm going to second it. I'll second it. I just thought --
Okay.
And Tom just went away. So, okay, we're going to -- well, we're going to proceed, because I think he might have some spotty cell service down there, but he might -- he might could probably come back on. Okay, so we waived the reading, a motion to hearing, consider and act. Do I have a motion?
Oh, yeah. So moved.
Okay, and I'll second it. No problem. So just to give some explanatory information here, the Board of Finance is going to be scheduling -- they were supposed to have a meeting tomorrow night, but it's on Yankapour, and so they pulled the meeting, and they're going to be rescheduling it for October when they can get a quorum. At any rate, most transfers are done solely by the Board of Finance, but in this case, this is a transfer to certain specific pots of money, with the surplus money. And so we sort of give our blessing to it, and then the Board of Finance will do their due diligence as well. I am going to hand this over to Jared Schmidt and Caitlin Bossy, who can explain this in a bit more detail for the board.
All right, thank you. Man for selectman. So the last meeting of the Board of Finance, we announced that there is a surplus of about $12 million for the FY '22 year. And so what this resolution is doing is to begin to figure out where that money is going to go. And so before we go into the what's being proposed here, I just wanted to do a couple of cleanups with this resolution language. So there were a couple of corrections that needed to be made. In the very first sentence, where it says to hear and consider and act upon, that last portion, as amended by the Board of Finance, should be struck, and that should just be -- should end there. That phrase should end there. And then the second one, there's if you go three lines down, where it says, whereas the remaining spending surplus is expected to be deposited into the town's fund balance, and that will be struck. These were a couple of lines that got left over from a previous resolution, so that will get struck. So what you're left with is effectively some kind of explanatory introductory text, which talks about how there is a $12 million surplus. 3.6 million of it is on the spending side, and as Brenda was saying, the 3.6 million that's related to spending, any changes to that, any transfers of that can be done by the Board of Finance, because it's already been appropriated, and it's just a change of where the money would go. The portion that we're dealing with today is the $8.4 million surplus that's related to revenue, which to date has not been recognized and has not been transferred anywhere, has not been appropriated in any way. And so that's what this is proposing to do, that the $8.4 million would be transferred out, would, number one, be recognized as revenue, and then be transferred, and you can -- you'll see the accounts listed there, where the excess revenue is coming from, the current year levy of $2 million, the prior year levy of $3 million, interest on delinquent taxes of $2.5 million, and the conveyance tax of $900,000. Those all totaled $8.4 million, so that will be transferred out and into the remediation account. And if you saw, there's a backup document as well, because the intent of this is to go to efforts to -- for remediation and also toward Penfield construction. And so the backup document goes into some detail about that, not only how this money is going to -- how we propose to have this money be used, but also other, you know, how we would deal with other remediation costs that are hanging out there.
Can I ask a follow-up question just to that?
Sure.
The only thing then today, and the rest goes to the Board of Finance, the only thing that we're weighing in on basically in layman's terms is taking that $8.4 million, being able to put it in towards remediation and related or adjacent expenses, but nothing else, correct?
So what we're proposing is that $200,000 of it be used for -- that $200,000 of it would go toward Penfield remediation? $200,000?
No, that's not what we're voting on. We're voting on what's on the agenda, which is to just move it into that remediation account. As to how it gets spent out of that, that's background, but we're not actually voting on that.
Right.
That's my question specifically. So like, the Board of Selectmen is just on hook, on the hook for saying, sure, transfer that money, but we're not sort of weighing in pro or con on how it's being spent, correct? I just want to make sure that I know what I'm on the hook for saying yes to.
Yes, that's correct. We're just -- what the background document is saying is what we're -- what we would propose to do with that money eventually.
Okay, but just like in a true technical sense, what all I'm saying is, yes, cool, spend the money, put it into that account, but I'm not weighing in on what that background documentation, I'm not giving an opinion on it.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, then I don't have any other questions.
Can I -- I do have a couple of questions, if I might.
Sure.
So first of all, to provide context here, we're putting this to the side in this remediation account as opposed to allow this to go to fund balance, because if we allow this to just flow through and by natural order of things go to fund balance, and then took it out to fund any remediation efforts, that could cause a question from the credit rating agencies, et cetera, from dipping into our fund balance, pretty much, right, Jared?
That's one reason, and it's just, you know, it would be an extra -- it would be an additional step that we don't really need to take. Yeah, right.
Yeah. The second thing is, the 3.6 million that we're not voting on, that the Board of Finance will vote on, that the RTM is not voting on, what is the goal of that? Where is that, again, to go into this remediation account? Is that what the recommendation to the Board of Finance is? I don't recall that.
So generally speaking, that entire proposal hasn't been fleshed out yet, but I can tell you that a large portion of it would go to the rainy -- would fall to the fund balance.
Fund balance. Okay, so some would call it to the fund balance, but you're not prepared yet before the Board of Finance to say how much of it goes there and how much of it might go to remediation or whatever. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's for their consideration, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. I was not surprised, I mean, we've spoken about it at the -- before. The one comment I had that surprised me a little bit was the categories of revenue that were higher. Conveyance did not surprise me. And then I thought pretty much the rest of it was due to the -- and tell me if I'm wrong, was this the Jack property mostly that they paid their prior year?
Yes.
Delinquencies?
Yes.
Yeah. So of the 8.4, how much was that one property? I just want to make sure this is in context for the public.
It was approximately 6.7 million? 6.8 million?
So we had 6.8 million related to the one property, so we were over -- we collected more revenues on other items by 1.6 million, right? Is that correct?
So, Tom, yeah, we've -- our collection rate was also higher, so our current year taxes made up a portion of that as well. And on the conveyance piece, they were over budget about 1.4, so this is just to get to the 8.4, so I'm using 900 of that 1.4 to get us exactly to the 8.4.
That's what I thought. So we had a little bit of uptick on the collection rate, and then we had so many activity and so much transaction in the real estate market that our conveyance really blew it out of the water, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you. So, and to reiterate, because we'll get a lot of questions on this, this isn't about a proven funding out of the reimbursement account. This is just set aside the funds as a funding mechanism, so that when we do have to consider whether it be Penfield or the Philpile, these funds are set really in abeyance, so we can consider that at that time, right?
Correct.
Great. I'd love to, just as a follow-up, Caitlin, if you could please forward to me what you gave to the Board of Finance, I'm just traveling right now. What makes up the spending differential of 3.6 just separately has nothing to do with my vote on this, and otherwise, I'm fine with what you're proposing here.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to receive that information by way of information as well. Thank you.
Sure.
I think, and in fairness, I think we did get it probably as part of our Board of Finance package or part of their quarterly review and all that. It's just I just need it at my fingertips, if you don't mind. It's just hard for me to come by right now. So thank you.
Is there any additional questions?
For selectmen, I've got nothing.
All right, very good. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and there's no additional questions. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this item? Hearing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to move that forward. All right, looks like you're free to go, Ms. Bossy.
Yes, thank you.
All right, item number 7. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and authorize a purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with Denali Water Solutions to provide cleaning of the primary digester tank at the water pollution control facility in the detailed bid number 2023-40 for a total fee not to exceed $531,600, with additional authority to execute change orders to said contract in the amount not to exceed $53,160 for a combined grand total not to exceed $584,760 from the operating fund, authorized appropriation from WPCA surplus.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, and we have Mr. Bodie, if you want to -- you're welcome to come up here, you're welcome to go over there, wherever you like to
I've got nothing further.
Feel comfortable. Well, well, he just -- all right, Gerald, then you're up.
Good.
Okay, so I know that, I believe, Mr. Attorney Baldwin did write an email to us saying he wasn't going to be attending, but I'm looking for it.
He said that he had reviewed the contract
Correct.
That he had, if the thing was according to.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and so I'll open it up. Gerald's here to answer any questions from the board. Is there some -- any board member that would like to ask a question?
So if I recall, we talked about this last time. I'm sorry, Nancy, did I cut you off? I didn't mean to.
I'm going in the same direction, but also to say, if there's anything we need to know, please tell us, otherwise I don't think I have questions.
Okay.
Yeah, because we talked about this at last meeting, right? And it was just Jim had not finished his review of the contract, is that -- please just refresh my memory and spend a little bit of time.
Yeah, I think there was a misstep, so what, in all honesty, probably the previous one, you should have had this same authorization that you're reviewing tonight, but I think we were doing it because it was out of order, because it would go to Board of Selectmen, then Board of Finance, then RTM, so in essence, you would have been acting upon an action that hadn't been authorized for the spending. So it came back this time, basically for authorization for the contract and to award the agreement to the company Denali.
And Mr. Baldwin, as he indicated in his email, was fine with the contract at this point in time, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I have nothing further on this particular item.
Very good.
My apologies, Nancy, if I cut you off.
I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And I'd like to make a motion to waive the readings for items 8 through 19 with the caveat that someone can just explain for the public what they are, but to not take the time to necessarily have to read out what the resolutions are.
Right. I mean, I'll just be very brief with them, but I do want to make sure people know what it, you know, has some idea of what we're doing.
Yep.
All right, so can I
I'll check on that, then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and approve recommendation from WPCA for additional funding for up to $300,000 from their fund balance to design the center street pump station, including the force main?
So moved.
Seconded.
Are there any questions from the board on this item?
So, yeah, I've got a couple of questions. And by the way, the audio from the speaker from the lectern, isn't that great on my end? Just to be aware. Just to be aware.
Jerry.
My apologies if I asked you to repeat any of that.
Okay.
John, you want to come over here?
Yeah, I'll come over there.
Thanks much.
Okay, how's this?
Great, better. So we've got two items before us tonight, number eight and number nine. Both are for, um, work related to the, to the designs of the pump stations. The one before us is Center Street. I'll have the same question on South Pine Creek. It says to approve an additional funding of 300,000, which implies that we had original funding approved, obviously. How are we so far off or, or what's going on that's driving up the costs here? And, and you can respond to this in both questions, though it's obviously specific.
Got it.
Yep.
It's Central Street right now, Center Street.
I don't, I don't know why additional is in there, because this is the first time Center Street and Pine Creek are coming before anyone. We, there's three pump stations that were on the WPCA Capital Waterfall. We approved, we approved one in June, and these other two were part of that, so the WPCA Commission said, why don't we just throw them in there? We're going to do an RFQ, RFP, or whatever, to get a, a engineer to, to do all three. So I don't know why it says additional funding, because this is the first time it's ever.
Remind me how much the, remind me how much the first one cost and why are they all, are it, was that 300,000 as well?
They're, yeah, they're all 300, and that's just, uh, a best guess at what it's going to cost.
Based on what? What kind of work was put together to come up with that number?
We, we, I asked an engineering firm that's familiar with the town. They did a 2018, uh, pump station study, and based off that and kind of, uh, adding a little for inflation and COVID and all that, they figured 300,000 per station was, was reasonable.
So would these, all of these go out for, this is going, your, your goal here, let me, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. We had one pump station, we sent that through. You guys thought about it and said, hey, we actually have to do all three pump stations. Fair statement so far?
Yes.
Following it?
Yep.
And then, and then you sat there and said, hey, economies of scale, since we have to do all three and we already disclosed in our waterfall projections and everything else that we would have to do all three, if we do all three at one time or sequentially or with the same group, we should get some price point differential. Is that fair? Is that, is that what's going on here?
Fair, yep.
Okay. So there's going to be at some point an RFP put together to go out to say, we're going to do all three of these. Is that fair?
Fair.
So by approving this, this just allows you to take essentially $900,000 and go to, uh, firms with an RFP, and I think Mr. Foley's still in the room, to, to ask them to do the work. Is that, is that right?
Yes, correct. Gerald says yes as well.
Okay. And then Gerald, this will come back before us after that, um, process in order for us to approve through Mr. Baldwin and all that, the contract, which at that point, any price point realization should be realized, any savings, right?
That's correct.
Okay. How many firms are we going out to on this? Do we know yet?
Uh, we would do a public solicitation, um, so I would anticipate it would be, it could be a dozen or, or about, but we would do a formal solicitation, um, based on what John had said. I think I agree with his, his, his numbers. I think the last major project we did was just under the $300,000 level, so we couldn't presume that it was going to be half of the cost, so we took all three figuring to be about the same cost. The other part would be is in terms of processing, um, in terms of the, the workload and, and the timing. So I think the estimate that he has is pretty accurate, but it, but you never can tell until you go out to the, to the actual solicitation process, so the fees may come in considerably less.
Yeah. The WPCA Board has all approved this, and Nancy, I know you sit, serve on that board, this has all been approved and recommended by them as well?
It has, and it, there's backup, it's in the backup as well, the meeting minutes.
I just wanted to go on the record for that publicly, yeah.
Sure.
So, go ahead. And Jared, there's like a little over $6 million that's in that fund, but we spoke for some of this at last meeting, right?
So there, so prior to, um, let's say, we'll say prior to the digester, with the contract that's in here, and, and these two items, there was about 14.5 million in their fund, in the WPCA fund balance. So with, with this, with the digester and these two, we'll be, uh, down to about 13.3.
My apologies, I don't know why I came up with 6 million, but for some reason that was the number that stuck in my head. Okay, so we have a sufficient amount of funds to do this. These need to be done, they were part of the waterfall. I commend the Water Pollution Control Board for putting the three together and thinking about the economies of scale on this. How long will it take to do this work? Like, when does this get started and is it sequentially? Is it the same time? Do we not know yet?
I don't think we really know yet. The RFP isn't fully drafted, um, so I don't know.
Okay, when does the RFP go out, do we think, assuming we approve this?
Uh, but John and I are working on it right now. We, we just originally started just on the Fairfield Beach Road site, and then now we have these other two, so we'll just have to layer in the scope for these two. So I would think within, safely within 30 days.
Our, our WPCA, our WPCA project manager, who's also an engineer, is working on the RFP as well, so she's not full-time, but she's, she's on it, so.
Yeah, so it's a collaborative effort.
Yep. And, and the reason we're trying to get these designed is because there's other funding out there, Metro Cog and Clean Water Fund, and they like shovel-ready projects, so if these are shovel-ready, hopefully we can get some funding too.
Yeah, no, that's right, and this is all part of the, um, kind of controlling it for safety purposes, et cetera, so, yeah. Good, good job here. Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with, actually, I'm fine with both number eight and number nine, though I know number eight's the only one before us right now.
Same. Thank you.
Okay. Let me stay, let's just, um, all right, so if there's no further questions on item number eight, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And, um, although we did discuss this, um, I'll ask for a motion to approve item number nine, uh, which is 300,000, similar, but for South Pine Creek Pump Station.
Nancy, do you want to move it since, yeah, second?
Yeah, it's still moved. I don't have any questions.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask for public comment on these items, uh, the one before, but I will now. Is there any comment on this item? I think there is, but I'll ask. Okay, there isn't. And is there any additional discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Gerald.
Thanks, Gerald. Thanks, guys.
Uh, item number 10. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution for 3,489,757 for the cost of roof, roof replacement projects at Sherman Elementary School, Riverfield, and Design Services for Roof Replacement Project at Holland Hill Elementary, Elementary School, authorizing the issuance of bonds of finance such appropriation?
Still moved.
I'm sorry, I might, I'm spotty again. Seconded.
We heard it, uh, thank you. We do have Angeles, um, and the Chairwoman of the Board of Ed, and also Sal Morbido here. Angeles, do you want to, you might want to come over here, Angeles? So I'm just gonna, uh, is there any questions, uh, from the board? Maybe that's just the easier way to do this.
Can I just make one comment first?
Sure.
Uh, there's a correction to this. This funding request is for the Holland Hill, I'm, I apologize, for the Roger Sherman Elementary School roof, partial roof replacement.
Yep.
And the Riverfield roof, partial roof replacement, we did not include the funding for the Holland Hill.
Oh.
Design. That was not approved by the Board of Education as of yet.
Oh, okay. All right, so we need an amendment to this, um, unamend the item to remove after Riverfield Elementary School and to, um, right before authorizing the issuance of bonds.
Yeah, Madam, first select person, I'll make the motion that we remove and Design Services for the Roof Replacement Project at Holland Hill Elementary School and.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're back to the main amended motion. Do you have any, uh, questions?
Yeah, can you step us through, Angeles, can you step us through, as I recall, this was on your waterfall, is that correct?
They, they were on our waterfall, um, Roger Ledlow, Middles, I apologize, Jennings, I'm going back again. Riverfield Elementary School was on the waterfall along with Holland Hill last year due to some, I'm mixing the schools up again, I apologize. Sherman Elementary School was on the waterfall last year for, to be done, as you guys were aware, you did approve the funding for the design spec on that school. Riverfield School was not on the waterfall for this coming summer, it was on for the following summer. We had some concerns with the Riverfield roof, so we swapped the Riverfield Elementary School roof with the Sherman, I mean, with the Holland Hill Elementary School roof. So that's why you're seeing Riverfield instead of Holland Hill today before you. The Riverfield roof, we did not request the funding, but we did go ahead with operating costs, operating budget to do the design work. So we are at the point where we are ready to go out to bid for both of these projects once the funding has been approved and the state has approved this project as a roof replacement for reimbursement.
So you, so you took money out of your operating budget to fund the design elements of the Riverfield School project, the roof project?
Correct. We felt it important to get that ahead of schedule so that we were ready to go out to bid with it once the funding for the project was approved. So we did find.
How much was that?
I, do we have the total? It was around 14,000. I can get the exact number to you.
Oh. Okay, so it was 14 or 15,000? It wasn't hundreds of thousands at all?
No, not at all.
Um, how much did you have in the waterfall for the two projects that this is accounting for now?
I apologize, I do not have the waterfall in front of me, so I don't know where the numbers were at, but I know at our, our latest updated waterfall did reflect the numbers in, that we are asking for, for this project.
I, I'd like to know what it was that was put before the town bodies previously, if you don't mind. But you, you constantly updated, so what you, you know, I, I would be astonished if the most latest, if the latest one didn't have this in here. I'd like to know where it was as compared to what was put in here, please.
Okay. I can get you to, so the last, last year's waterfall, what the numbers were that were approved for these two roofs, I can get for you. I believe the.
When can you get those?
I believe Sal is working on pulling up the waterfall from our website right now.
Perfect. So the other question I have is, so Sherman, I know because of the floodplain issues and the like, we've had to be judicious in when we did projects, right? And do them kind of piecemeal? We've done phase one, we've done phase two, we've done, um, is this kind of part of this why this was done separately? Is, is that part of this? I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth.
No. This, so this roof was, uh, originally supposed to be part of a phase four project, but at this time we've held off on the forest, phase four project at Sherman, which is why you're seeing this roof, roof as a standalone project.
But it was part of a phase, but you pulled, are you pulling it up and out of that for a specific reason? Are there issues?
The phase four of Sherman, um, was not getting support from its constituency at the school for parts, parts of it, but we did need to do the roof, so we pulled that forward while the rest of, the rest of the needed items at the school were further discussed. We were quite far out on this roof. If you recall, back in 2012, this was one of the, uh, roofs that got a roof, uh, restoration through the manufacturer and an extended warranty. So it was a good roof 10 years ago and a good roof five years ago, and it's getting rather old right now, and it, it, it's time to do this roof.
So how, how old is it, if you don't mind?
That roof was installed in 1991. So it is 30 more.
We get our money's worth on it?
Oh, yeah, we, we wring every bit out of it.
What about, what, the other one, Riverfield, I'm a little surprised at, um, only because we just spent so much money redoing that school not that long ago. I was surprised to see that the roof there needed to be done.
Uh, that roof is the same issue with, um, that Sherman is. It was a roof restoration project in 2012, uh, before the addition expansion project. It is at end of life. We had a substantial repair that we needed to do last summer, uh, so it's aging a bit more rapidly than we had expected, so that's why we moved it far, uh, moved it closer on the waterfall and on our list of things to do, uh, just because we're worried about.
Do we have a very specific reason as to why it wasn't part of the renovation of that school when we did it?
It was not expired. It was still a warranted roof, and we don't typically replace warranted roofs during restoration, renovation project.
I was just wondering, yeah, I was just wondering whether we're spending more money now because we didn't do it, because that, that wasn't done all that long ago, right? Are you saying this roof is 30 years old as well?
Yes, this, this roof is that old, yes. It was given a restoration, uh, update in 2012, um, just like Sherman, so it's, uh, this was the whole discussion back, you know, 10 years ago was, these are well-performing roofs, uh, we're going to give them some TLC, low dollar, um, and get an extension on. So we're, we're at the other end of that, uh, whole discussion now.
Yeah. No, look, I, I have no problems with the fact that we got 30 years out of them and the fact that we did some, as you called it, TLC 10 years ago, I do vaguely remember all that, so I, again, kudos on that front. I was just, uh, I, I also am very familiar with what happened with Sherman and kind of chunking things out because of the, the investment, uh, guidelines or caps we have there under FEMA and under, or under the, you know, where it's located. I was just surprised on Riverfield because I knew we had just spent so much money renovating it that I would have thought, and that wasn't all that long ago. Tell me, how mu, how do I get comfortable with these numbers? Like, why are these the right estimates? Why, tell me the process you guys went through for that? Just because I want to know, I want to know that this was in the waterfall, and I want to know that the estimates are, are something we can stand behind.
Yeah, the estimates were, uh, recently done by Silver Petricelli and Associates, the architect for the project. You know, all costs, um, since the pandemic have been escalating, and we had a healthy contingency on our last summer, this past summer's project, and we used, uh, almost every bit of it. So, you know, we, we looked at what bids were being received on projects that Silver Petricelli had done recently, so that we had a good basis for projecting the costs for these. We also put an escalation on the costs, um, to carry us through to next summer, because as you know, uh, inflation is a little bit hot right now.
And the goal is to obviously do these projects next, during the summer months next year?
Correct.
Correct. Correct. And just to answer your previous question, the Roger Sherman Elementary School roof.
Correct. And just to answer your previous question, the Roger Sherman Elementary School roof is at 1916647, and it was previously listed on the waterfall as 1,33108, so there is some escalation there. And the Riverfield Elementary, the Riverfield Elementary School roof replacement is currently at 1,55565110, and it was previously listed on the waterfall at 1,848550. So there is escalation on both of those.
Well, wait, you gained some back on that one, is that what you're telling me?
No, it went from 1.5 to 1.
Wrong?
It went from 1.5 to 1.8.
Okay, so I, I heard, I misheard you. So we lost 300,000 there, and it sounds like we lost, how many hundreds of thousands on the other one?
Around 700.
Six.
Six.
So, so we're a million down here?
Correct. And our, our update.
Your waterfall.
Yep, and our updated waterfall, which will be coming out, is, uh, has, does reflect these new numbers on it, and we did working with the First Select Woman and her working group for Capital Projects, we made sure we made adjustments to, so that we are falling within the guidelines set by that working group.
So, in other words, you had a, you had a waterfall, which was a pretty healthy waterfall, as I recall. Were you able to make up this million-dollar overage by pushing back on other items?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's within the waterfall, it's a priority for the Board of Education, the roofs are 30 years old. We've gotten our lives out of them. You're comfortable with the estimates because you worked with the outside consultants, and you included escalation for next year due to the economic environment?
Absolutely, yes.
What was the last question? What was the escalator you put on here, year over year, do you recall?
I believe it's five.
Five percent.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies, I monopolized that, but I have no further questions on that.
Okay. Nancy, do you have any additional questions or any questions at all?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we need to amend this, um, the amount, so I'm going to, we have an amended motion on the floor. I'm going to read the amended motion with the new number, um, because it's actually 8,000 less than the original. So it's, um, to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled the Resolution Appropriating 3,481,757 for the cost of roof replacement projects at Sherman and Riverfield, authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And we had our questions, so. We are, we're going to update the resolution language too for the bond issuance, uh, just as a FYI. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. All right. So we do have quite a bit on our agenda today, and I just want to be, um, you know, just want to mention that, and I know that Nancy said she has a hard stop at six, so I, I just wanted to mention that. Um, the next item, we have a motion, um, can I get a motion, this also requires the RTM approval, that the Town of Fairfield authorizes the Board of Education of the Town of Fairfield to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services to, to accept or reject a grant for Roger Sherman's partial roof replacement project at Roger Sherman School. Further resolved that Roger Sherman School and Building Committee is hereby established as a building committee with regard to the Sherman Partial Roof Replacement Project at Roger Sherman School. Further resolved, the Town of Fairfield hereby authorized at least preparation of schematic drawings and outline specificate, specifications for the Roger Sherman Partial Roof Replacement Project at Roger Sherman Elementary School. Boy, did I just say Roger Sherman a lot. I have a motion to. Motion? Tom?
Yeah.
Second?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to open it up. Does anyone have any questions for this item? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We're just applying, um, the, the way Sal explained it to me is that we need to have this authorization from us so that they can actually apply for the state, and they have to go through the RTM, and if we wait any longer, they won't be able to make the application without these specific approvals in place. So it's pretty much just sort of, um, a bureaucratic item. Can't hear you, Tom, you must be on mute.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, Tom, I can't hear you.
I think it says mute up in the corner, too.
Well, it looks like it's lit, though. It doesn't look muted. We don't have him muted, but.
No.
No, but he is.
Maybe your connection, Tom, I don't know.
You gotta click that to mute.
Yeah, that's not muted, no. Yeah, it's got on your end, uh, Tom. I think he's going to call in. All right. Hmm.
There?
Yeah, we can, Tom, is that you?
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So as I was saying, this item is just purely, um, it's just an administrative issue, so they can make the application. They have to go to the Board, uh, I mean, the RTM at this month, right, Sal?
Yes.
And so then that they can make the application for any funding, but they have to have those certain, you know, sort of yays in place, even though it's just to make an application show. This isn't really a big deal.
I have one que, I have one question on the item, though, that I don't recall seeing before, that's all. And that is, it says that you guys or this committee can accept or reject a grant. Why, why would you, have we ever rejected a grant?
No.
On a project like this?
I think that's just perfunctory language.
This is the state's preferred language, and we've, we've always used those words in the, what's called the three resolution motion. Uh, and I, I am not aware of us ever rejecting a grant from OSC GNR.
Yeah, I would, unless there was, you know, that it was going to be more expensive to comply with whatever their requirements were versus we could get it done cheaper.
Correct.
I would hope we don't turn down a grant like that, so.
Correct.
Other than that, I'm fine.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Nope, I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, the next item, number 12, to, uh, can I get a motion? Uh, are we using, we're using the Roger Sherman Elementary School, correct?
Ro, Roger, yeah, you don't have to use the word partial.
But isn't, it is partial, though.
It is a partial roof, but you don't have to say that in the name of the building committee.
Oh, oh, in the name of the building committee, gotcha, okay. All right, so, um.
I, I sent that over to Jennifer this morning.
Can I get a motion to approve the Roger Sherman Elementary School Roof Building Committee? To hear and consider and approve the charge for the Roger Sherman. Okay. Uh, is, I don't think there's any discussion, is there, on this item?
None for me.
No, I'm good.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the First Select Woman revolved with the Special Projects Standing Building Committee shall serve as the Roger Sherman Elementary School Roof Replacement, uh, Building Committee, uh, for the purpose of performing the partial roof replacements at Roger Sherman Elementary School?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, Madam First Select Woman, is, this building committee, this Special Projects Building Committee is up and operational now? It's been functioning, I haven't heard from this one in quite some time, so I just wanted to check on the status of it.
Yes.
What have they been working on recently, do we know?
I think they did Osborne Roof, right?
They did Roger Sherman, uh, Roger Ludlow Middle School Roof Replacement this summer.
Yep.
$3 million worth of work.
So Sal, they have the bandwidth at this point in time? They're not inundated with other items?
No, um, they, they have been basically the Roof Building Committee for, I think, the past five or six roof replacement projects.
They have a lot of experience on roofs.
So they're, they're really, they're really in tune with doing roofs.
And somebody's reached out to them and told them that this is coming their way this summer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thanks.
Okay. And I, I would say public comment, but I know we don't going to have any, but just for the record. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, item, um, number 14. Can I get a motion to authorize Town of Fairfield and Board of Education to apply for the Commissioner of Administrative Services to accept or reject the grant for Riverfield, same as the prior item, um, where this is just a sort of administrative function to be able to apply for the grant on the Riverfield, uh, Partial Roof Replacement, same as Sherman. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, can I get a motion to, um, to approve Riverfield Elementary School Roof Building Committee to hear and consider, uh, the charge of the partial roof replacement at the school?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any comment on this item? Hearing none. Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 16. Can I get a motion to consider and act upon the following resolution? Um, that the Special Projects Standing Building Committee shall serve as the River, Riverfield Elementary School Partial Roof Replacement Committee for the purpose of performing the partial roof pla, replacement at Riverfield Elementary School?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, item number 17, didn't I just do that? No, okay. Item number 17. Uh, can I get a motion, uh, that the Town of Fairfield authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Min, DAS to accept or reject a grant for North Straffield Air Conditioning Upgrade Project at North Straffield and Montry School? Further be resolved, um, that the Air Conditioning Building Committee is hereby established in the Building Committee with regard to the North Straffield Project at North Straffield School, um, and authorizes at least a preparation of the schematic drawings and outline spec, specifications for North Straffield Project at North Straffield School. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
Uh, is there any questions on this item?
Okay, so Nancy, do you have any? For, so for this, again, this is one of those that it's broken up between 17, 18, and 19, which is, um, Stratford, Straffield, rather, Osborne Hill and Fairfield Woods, is that correct? And these are all air conditioner projects, correct?
Yes, North Straffield, not Straffield, but yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, North Straffield, my apologies, I misread it. Um, so we're establishing, basically, we're asking somebody to go explore getting grants. We're establishing building committees, but we're not putting in the charge of the building committee, nor are we saying who's on the building committee like we did in the last couple. And the other item is, we're saying in each of these that you can go spend money, but the money isn't articulated to put together schematic drawings and outline specifications. Am I following this right? What am I missing here?
Yeah, that's, uh, you, you want, okay. Yeah, this, this one, we're kind, we're, we're kind of navigating in the fog because the state statute was just passed that, uh, funds uh, this particular program with the state, and we're just getting the rules right now, and we're moving as quickly as possible because there's a very short timeframe for the application. Uh, back in July, the state approved $150 million for their, we'll, we'll call it the HVAC Project Fund, and, uh, there were no rules produced for us to apply, uh, for any project. They recently, uh, rolled out the rules, uh, still a little bit fuzzy around the edges, and one of the things that they want us to do is these three enabling resolutions, much like any other school construction project. Uh, the reason that we're not, um, doing a charge or seating a building committee is we don't necessarily know, it's a competitive grant, so we don't necessarily know that we'll win a grant. So there's really no reason to go through the effort until such time that, uh, we're awarded something, and that would be sometime, the timeline we're getting is in February of next year.
Do we know any criteria, Sal, or but who they're going to give the grants to?
Uh, there's, well, as is with all things competitive grants, it always seems to go to, uh, the four or five large municipalities in the state, um, usually take the lion's share of the funding, but it's not, it's not written that way. Uh, sometimes it is written that way. Um, it's a competitive grant, it's supposed to be, who is most, who has something that's the most ready for them. It's, uh, it, it almost harkens back to, you know, 2009 when we had shovel-ready projects. Something like that.
Yeah, so let me ask a question with that. I get where you're going. Thank you for the explanation, that was very good. The one thing that bothers me here is, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to put this together, um, and then it says you can go out and put together the, um, well, where, um, the schematic drawings and the online spec, the outline specifications, right?
Correct.
Where, where are you going to find the funding for that? And I want to know that I'm not giving you a blank check to do that. Not that I don't trust you, but there's no dollar amounts in here, so I, how does this work?
You already fund, this was already funded several months back, these projects?
With what?
Did you had a bond resolution?
There's, I'm sorry, there is the bond resolution for the Phase One Air Conditioning, the $22 million, so this would go into that.
So that relates back to this?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to make sure, I remember that, but I didn't, there was no tie-in here, so that's part of this resolution?
Correct.
So I, I'd like to add some language that kind of states this to clarify it?
The, um, I would recommend.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're, where, where you're going with that. The, the state is kind of, um, freaky about the, the wording of these three resolutions.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they don't like, you know, they don't like a is or a there or a, you know, they. They don't like, you know, they don't like a "is" or a "there," or, you know, they don't like anything changed. This is the way that, you know, serve the pancakes, then put the maple syrup on.
Funds previously appropriated? Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't know, Tom. I don't know that we should mess with these appropriation language because this is what the state is looking at. I mean, we already know for ourselves that we already approved it, and the funding is there for that, but I'm.
How much did we approve back then, and how much do you guys think this is going to cost?
Well, we.
By the way, I don't like taking any financial controls or financial advice from the state, but I digress.
The, the monies were approved for those three projects per the numbers that were in the waterfall, so that's, that's where we'll be designing to. The, some of the funding is the ARPA funding, so that is not reimbursable by the state because they feel that they already gave us the money. So that would be used for design upfront, so we'll have a better, while this process is going on, once the on-call list is certified by Gerald Foley, we'll be able to select designers from that, get the design underway. So by the time that we get word in February whether we're receiving a state grant or not, we'll be ready to start going to bid or at least much closer. So we're doing things concurrently. The HVAC funding was not approved and wasn't guaranteed that it was going to be approved at the time that our town boards approved the $23 million for the Phase One HVAC. So we're really not doing anything that the town boards wasn't, weren't anticipating. We're actually looking to mitigate the, mitigate the expenditures by seeking these grants.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to tie it all together because it wasn't, I didn't understand how it was all laid out, so, okay. All right.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, I'm set. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. All right.
One last question. These three items, all three of them, in exact same language, you're saying that this all came from the state, all dictated by the state, and all relative to getting a potential grant from the state for these three items?
That is correct.
Okay, if there's no further discussion. Public comment, if there's any?
Sure.
Yeah, hi. This is Gerald Foley. So I was just commenting that the language isn't the same. That's, so the, if you go, if the state is dictating how these are supposed to be addressed, it's not identical.
Yeah, but it's fairly close. It's basically what they.
Well, no, I would just, I just wanted to bring to attention is the, if you're looking at, say, 18, it just says Osborne Hill Project. Previous ones dictate Osborne Hill Air Conditioning Upgrade Project. So I'm not sure if the state's going to be that particular. So in other words, so it's.
I think what Tom was referring to is having sort of a history of where we already voted and stuff.
I understand, I just was, just bring it to everyone's attention. That's all. If you were going to, if you were going to make them identical to the previous ones, because the previous ones, it dictates exactly what project it is. So if you went back to, I don't know, one of the prior, one of the prior ones, you'll see your project description is just delineated. So it makes it crystal clear what they are. The last three don't mention the project in the second and the third further resolved resolutions.
They say, Osborne, they say Osborne Hill Air Conditioning Upgrade Project, and the other one says Fairfield Woods Air Conditioning Upgrade Project.
Right. So if you read the prior ones, the ones for the roof, in the second further resolved, so in here, it just says, so I'm reading from 18. It says, with regard to Osborne Hill Project at Osborne Hill Elementary School. But the previous ones, it dictates the name of the project, so it would say roof. It said in the previous ones, it said partial roof replacement. So in this one, following the same pattern, it would just say Osborne Hill Air Conditioning Building Project. In other words, it would just repeat the same phrase. And so that way, they're all consistent. So I'm saying the last three are not consistent with the previous three. Not that it's going to make a big difference, but if this.
I don't think it makes a difference, and I think these are all in line with each other. The roof language is the same for all three, and these are all the same, so I, do you think this is?
I'm not necessarily seeing what Gerald is saying here.
All right.
I'm trying to underline.
He said in the, in the last stanza, the further resolve, the last further resolve in 17, 18, and 19.
Doesn't say AC.
It refers to this Fairfield Woods Project, the Osborne Hill Project, and the North Stratfield Project, as opposed to.
Afterward, air conditioning.
We can change that if we want.
Well, I just was mentioning it in case if you, you know, if you're saying if the state's being a stickler, that's all.
That air conditioning project.
Yeah. You just, it would just basically.
You can add that in if you want.
But it says air conditioning.
It doesn't say it on the third stanza.
Not in the last.
Not in the last one.
Last further resolve.
Right. Because all it says is the, it says for the Fairfield Woods Project, whereas the previous ones, it would, it would say, it's, say in this one, it would say air conditioning. So it'd say Fairfield Woods Air Conditioning Project or Building Upgrade Project. It just, it just doesn't, doesn't repeat it.
So it's just the last one that doesn't say air conditioning? The other ones do?
No, in each one, you would just.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm marking it for you.
Yeah, so if you, if you use the ones for.
I got it. I got it.
An excellent point. Just if, if you've got the specific language, and you're asking us to vote on the specific language, make sure we have the right specific language.
Right. That's, that's the only reason I mentioned it.
I got it.
I don't want it to, I figured for semantics, because it's going through all three boards.
Yep, got it. So I'm going to amend, ask for amended version to insert AC at the last sentence of this item after North Stratfield before project.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have the amended motion with AC inserted, and we have our motion and a second on the amendment. Can I get a motion and a second on the amended version of item 17?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Any discussion from the public? All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 18. Can I get a motion to amend item number 18 to insert AC after the last sentence, after the last Osborne Hill before project?
So moved.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any, can I get a motion on the amended item number 18?
So moved.
You just.
Yeah, isn't that what we just, sorry.
No, we just, no, we just did an amendment. Now the main motion has amended.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, without reading it. Got it. Okay.
So moved.
Seconding.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Is there any discussion from the public? All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 19. Can I get a motion to amend item number 19 to insert the word "air conditioning" after Fairfield Woods Project in the last sentence?
Yeah, so moved.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I can make a motion to the amended, to move the amended item, right?
Very good. Yes. I'll second. Is there any discussion from the board on this side?
No.
Any comment from the public? Are you going to talk? You want to come here, Christine? I don't know if they hear you.
Yeah. I just would like to thank.
Just speak into the mic. Hey, Christine.
I don't think it's on, Chris.
She's on. I'm on. I just want to, Brenda, thank the first elect woman for adding this to the agenda I know was short notice. Thank the board of selectmen for hearing it and for your approval and support on these projects. This is an important first step to getting our roofs approved and getting our air conditioning moving forward, hopefully with some state support. So just want to thank you again.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, we're back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And we did item number 20 out of order, and I, I'd like to just say for the record, I'd like to ask for our body and for anybody in attendance for a moment of silence for our fellow Americans who lost their lives as a result of the Hurricane Ian, and also to keep all those affected by the terrible events of this storm in our thoughts and Is there any items that anyone would like to bring up under new business?
Brenda?
Sure.
Point of personal, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Just because of what you just did, thanks very much. I am actually presently down in Florida. I got stuck here, as you well know, through the hurricane. They kept on canceling my flights, and I couldn't get out. And it is truly devastation down here. Luckily, where I am, I was spared the worst of it, though my son and I lived through it. I will tell you, it was something to behold, and the beautiful Southwest coastline is positively devastated. The one takeaway I would have, much like what we lived through as a community with Sandy and what they're living through down here, I truly would say it was remarkable how our building codes with FEMA and that really worked out. And, and a lot of the things, it could have been a heck of a lot worse if there wasn't so much new construction and construction down here that was up to those standards. And while I hesitate to say that those buildings all made it through this catastrophic event, they certainly did much better than the older buildings that weren't held to those same standards, and it's actually astonishing when you look at it. But the resiliency of these people, what they're going through to rebuild their community, it's truly, truly remarkable to behold, and it certainly reminds me of what Fairfield and the rest of the Connecticut coastline went through with Sandy, and hopefully not to be repeated. So, and I look forward to getting back up there as soon as plane travel will allow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're glad you're safe.
I appreciate it.
Nancy, do you have any items?
No, thanks.
Okay. All right. Well, can I get a motion to approve? I mean, adjourned.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
You, too.